Alright, what's up, what's up? On to day two of the livestream. Just do a quick audio check real quick to make sure everything is working. Okay, looks good. Alright, we are gonna pick off from where we left off yesterday, which let me share my screen. There we go. On the administration module, I'm just gonna jump right into it because I have a hard stop right at 4:30 today, so. Okay, I think I stopped at slot yesterday. Make sure I just had everything else that was read. Hmm, note that booking appointment does not necessarily require that slots be identified. Yeah, I think I read this yesterday, so I'm gonna move on to the next resource, which is episode of care. Actually, let me start a little bit of music as well. Think we had lofi yesterday? Nice. Okay, cool. So, episode of care. An association between a patient in an organization, healthcare slash healthcare providers during which time encounters may occur. The managing organization assumes a level responsibility for the patient during this time. Association between healthcare. I think first off the bat, it makes me think of like the episodes of care in Epic. Where an episode of care could be like, let's say, a few months of chemotherapy for like six months and then all the visits and encounters and notes associated with that. That's the first that comes to mind. So scope and usage, the episode of care resource contains information about an association of a patient with the healthcare provider for a period of time under which related healthcare activities may occur. Seems very similar to the Epic thing. In many cases, this represents a period of time where the healthcare provider has some level of responsibility for the care of the patient regarding a specific condition or problem, even if not currently participating in an encounter. These resources are typically known in existing systems as episode of care, case program problem episode, encounter, visit, contact. Case program. I don't know if I understand the distinction between this, a case and a program? Okay. Multiple organizations and transfer of care. Many organizations can be involved in an episode of care. However, each organization will have its own episode of care resource instance that tracks this responsibility with the patient. When an organization completes their involvement with the patient and transfers care to another organization, this is often in the form of a referral to another organization or organizations. When an incoming referral is received, a new episode of care may be created for this organization. The initial steps in the intake workflow for the referral often involve some form of assessment, eligibility, capacity, care levels, which could take some time. Once the intake process is completed and the patient is accepted, a care plan is often created. Does that mean a care plan is associated to a sort of care? See care plan in here? I don't think I see care plan. But this one's interesting, so basically, because like episode of care can span encounters in a bit's multiple organizations, you can have two organizations that each have their own instance of this resource. Okay. Boundaries and relationships. The primary difference between the episode of care and the encounter is that the encounter records the details of an activity directly related to the patient, while the episode of care is the container that can link a series of encounters together for problems and issues. The example scenarios below give some examples as to when you might want to use an episode of care. The difference is a similar difference between the episode, wait, the this difference is a similar difference between the episode of care and a care plan. The episode of care is a tracking resource rather than a planning resource. The episode of care usually exists before the care plan. I think that makes sense. So if episode of care is like a container and this container could have multiple encounters, it's you plan this first before you actually have a care plan of the specifics. You don't need a care plan to use an episode of care. Okay. Background and context. Systems collect a coherent group of activities such as encounters related to a patient's health condition or problem, often referred to as a care episode. Information about an episode is often shared across systems and in some cases organizational and disciplinary boundaries. An episode of care contains details about the purpose of the care and can exist without any activities. The minimal information that would be required in an episode of care would be a patient, an organization, and a reason for the ongoing association. Other reasons for creating an episode of care could be for tracking the details required for government reporting or billing. Expected implementations, chronic disease management systems, community care systems, tracking progress of a specific condition, tracking government funding, problem-based general practice systems, disability support systems, age care systems. Yeah, in Epic, it was always like episodes of care associated with like longitudinal treatments of such. So one classic example is like OPAT or probably more common like these like chronic disease management systems like diabetes, hypertension, high cholesterol, stuff like that. This resource is referenced by all these resources. So they have identifiers, a status, a status history, diagnosis, so the particular thing you're treating, the patient, the organization that's responsible, the period of time, who referred to request a care manager, a team and an account. Okay, this makes sense. I'm actually have not really used this resource much, but it seems fairly straightforward. Okay. I think the one thing, maybe I'll write that down in the notes, that stands out is I'd never thought of episode of care being multiple instances. But it makes sense in this case, so this was... Where is that one? Oh, here. This one. I think this is like a good test question. Let me paste that here. So this one is an episode of care. Paste this. Cool. Go back over here. Let's see. Okay, let's go to the next resource, encounter resource. An interaction between a patient and a healthcare provider for the purpose of providing healthcare services or assessing the health status of a patient. Scope and usage. A patient encounter is further characterized by the setting in which it takes place. One second. I'm gonna go grab my headphones real quick, be right back. Okay. Let's get back to it. Okay, so scope and usage. A patient encounter is further characterized by the setting in which it takes place. Amongst them are ambulatory, emergency, home health, inpatient virtual counters. An encounter encompasses the life cycle from pre-admission, the actual encounter for ambulatory encounters, and admission, stay in discharge for inpatient counters. During the encounter, the patient may move from practitioner to practitioner and location to location. Because of the broad scope of encounter, not all elements will be relevant in all settings. For this reason, admission discharge related information is kept in a separate hospitalization component within encounter. That's interesting. So there's like a section in encounter that has this, we'll probably see it later. The class element is used to distinguish between the settings which will guide further validation and application of business rules. There is also substantial variance from organization to organization and between jurisdictions and countries on which business events translate to the start of a new encounter or what level of aggregation is used for encounter. For example, each single visit of a practitioner during a hospitalization may lead to a new instance of encounter. But depending on local practice and systems involved, it may well be that is aggregated to a single instance for a whole hospitalization. I feel like that'd be very hard to track. Even more aggregation may occur where jurisdictions introduce groups of encounters for financial or other reasons. Encounters can be aggregated or grouped under other encounters using the part of element. See below for examples. Encounter instances may exist before the actual encounter takes place to convey pre-admission information, that makes sense, including using encounter elements to reflect the planned start date or planned encounter locations. In this case, the status element is set to be planned. The hospitalization component is intended to store the extended information relating to a hospitalization event. It is always expected to be the same period as the encounter itself. Where the period is different, another encounter instance should be used to capture this information as a part of this encounter instance. I read this one more time. The hospitalization component is intended to store the extended information related to a hospitalization event. It is always expected to be the same period as the encounter itself. Where the period is different, another encounter instance should be used to capture it. I guess I've been curious, when would it be different? Maybe it's like the difference between in a hospitalization, you have to capture separately the ED admission in the actual inpatient one. So in this case, would this be like one encounter and then there'd be one component for the inpatient stay in one person, one part for the ED stay? That's, that's the first thing that comes to mind, I guess we'll find out later. The procedure and encounter have references to each other and these should be two different procedures. One for the procedure that was performed during the encounter stored in procedure dot encounter. And another for cases where an encounter is a result of another procedure stored in encounter dot indication. Such as follow-up encounter to resolve complications from an earlier procedure. Okay, so basically, procedures and encounters can reference each other. And these should be two different procedures. One for the procedure that was performed. So within encounter, you can have procedures that are performed, stored in procedure dot encounter. And then in other scenarios, the encounter could be the result of a procedure. In that case, would be the indication. Such as a follow-up encounter to resolve complications. Status management, during the life cycle of an encounter, it will pass through many statuses. Typically, these are in order or the organization's workflow. So planned, in progress, finished and canceled. This status information is often used for other things and often an analysis of the status history is required. This could be done by scanning through all the versions of the encounter, checking the period of each, and then doing some form of post-processing. To ease the burden of this or where a system doesn't support resource histories, a status history component is included. So that sounds like you can have two ways of doing this, so like the resource itself having a version each time you update it versus like a status history to ease. Doesn't support resource histories. I feel like that would still be... I need to go back to check this. So the latter where you use status history would mean you wouldn't be able to go back and look at each version of a resource because the fire server must enable that. Like not all fire servers have the ability to like version, but it's up to them to choose, so. Maybe that's the case. There is no direct indication purely by the status field as to whether an encounter is considered admitted. The context of the encounter and the business practices, policies, workflows types can influence this definition. Acute care facility, age care center, outpatient clinic, emergency department, community-based clinic. Stateses of arrive, triage, or in progress could be considered the start of the mission and also have the presence of the hospitalization sub-component entered. Now, this is actually very confusing because then you leave the implementation to the people modeling that. Oh, we have Johnny's in the house. What's up Johnny? You're funny, you're so handsome. How would you track it? Sorry, I was like in the zone, so I was like trying to tell her, I don't, I don't know what, which ones you're referring to here. So in encounter, I'm, you know, I really appreciate that you are asking questions about this. Appreciate that. So an encounter is just the meeting and procedures are done during an encounter. Yeah, it's, it's almost, the easiest way to think about it is like every single time you go see your, your doc, each one of those are considered an encounter. And then during each encounter, maybe you have like, you need a biopsy or something, that would be the procedure done during encounter. Would an encounter version be the type of visit? No, I, I think they were talking earlier to represent like the types of encounters, it's probably this, there's a class field that they were talking about earlier. So like down here, yeah, it's this thing. So like this is the encounter resource and there's a class and you can probably categorize it to like, let me see, maybe emergency, inpatient, ambulatory, things like that. Yeah, so ambulatory, and these are all like very common for like billing purposes, pre-admission, stuff like that. Sup, sup? Always appreciate your support, man. Nice, nice questions too. Uh, let's see, so if we keep going, I think I was on here. The on leave status. Oh, you have an on leave status. Might or might not be part of the admission. For example, if the patient was permitted to go home for a weekend or some other form of external event, the location is also likely to be filled in with a location status of present. For other examples such as outpatient visits, day procedure colonoscopy, the patient could also be considered to be admitted. Hence, the encounter doesn't have a fixed definition of admitted. At a minimum, we do believe that a patient is admitted when the status is in progress. These are the semantics I feel like are so important to like accurately represent what is going on in healthcare. But it is interesting. So like you could have an encounter that is ongoing at, let's say, a nursing home and perhaps the patient is visiting their family for a weekend. So then in this case, you probably can indicate a status that suggests that that's what's happening. Boundaries and relationships. The encounter resource is not used to store appointment information. The appointment resource is intended to be used for that. So actually, whatever I said earlier was incorrect. Encounter is probably more so for those inpatient stays and I think your appointment resource, which is another one, is used for your outpatient ones. You can leave and still be admitted? Um, I don't think you can leave and still be admitted. I think um, in those cases, you would probably have a status that indicates that they left or the encounter is closed. Oh, um, thanks for letting me know, Kerry. Yeah, we have like two meetings going on right now, so. That's, that's kind of fortunate. Sorry about that. I don't know if there's like a way to control noise. Yeah, it's already on noise suppression too. Let me see if I can turn down maybe my audio in this case, audio volume. I don't even know if I can do that. Yeah. This is, sorry Kerry, I don't, I don't think I'll be able to adjust the, the sound. So the status would pause the encounter and not create a new one? Yeah, I, I would think so. If a patient left, oh, actually, this is a, it's probably up to the people who implement this. Like someone can choose to decide to actually just close an encounter and come back and open a new one, or they can keep it open, change the status, and then when they're back, change the status back to saying they're here. And I think like these differences and how people implement make interoperability in healthcare super hard because there's different ways of doing it. I was hoping that there'd be like more constraints here, so people can do it the same way, but that, that's probably unrealistic. Kerry says, I always thought an encounter is a type of patient visit. Yeah, I think of it as a type of patient visit. Like typically in like a hospital, you have your patient that comes and gets admitted, you get an encounter in that case. I don't think I'm super clear and this is what this section in all the fire resources you talk about, like how do you use it in the context of other resources? And I think I'm not entirely clear between encounter and appointment because encounter has that class and that class, I believe, had an ambulatory. So if it's an ambulatory visit, I would have thought this to be similar to an appointment. So I'm not clear on that difference, which hopefully it'll be clear as we read through more of this. But yeah, maybe it explains more down here. Note that in many systems, outpatient encounters, which are in scope for encounter and appointment are used concurrently. What? In FIRE, appointment is used for establishing a date for the encounter. Interesting. While encounter is applicable to information about the actual encounter, the patient showing up. As such, an encounter in the planned status is not identical to the appointment that scheduled it, but it is the encounter prior to its actual occurrence. With the expectation that encounter will be updated as it progresses to completion. Patient arrival at a location does not necessarily mean the start of the encounter. Patient arrives an hour earlier than he is actually seen by a practitioner. I think I'm a little confused. An appointment is normally used for the planning stages of an appointment. Searching, locating an available time, then making the appointment. Once this process is completed and the appointment is about to start, then the appointment will be marked as fulfilled and linked to the newly created encounter. This new encounter may start in an arrive status when they are admitted at a location or facility and then will move to the ward where the, another part of encounter may begin. Communication resources are used for a simultaneous interaction between a practitioner and a patient where there is no direct contact. Examples include a phone message, a transmission of some correspondence documentation. There is no duration recorded for a communication resource, but it could contain sent and received several times. Standard extension is associated encounter. This extension should be used to reference an encounter where there's no property that already defines this association on the resource. So I think this actually makes sense. So the way I'm interpreting it now is that in not the inpatient world, because there's not usually an appointment with a inpatient visit. I'm assuming in the outpatient world, when you're going to see your doctor, you will use what we talked about last time, which is like the schedule resource. Each schedule has multiple slots. And then to book a slot, you, that's related to the appointment. So appointments are associated to slots and this is purely for the scheduling piece, which this seems to kind of confirm. It's used for finding what times are available with your doc. You schedule it and once that is done, then you create a new encounter and then within the encounter, you document all the details, like what you guys talked about, the notes, diagnoses, meds, labs, things like that. So I think that makes sense. So in this case, then the encounter and appointment resource are not mutually exclusive. They usually happen both when it's an outpatient visit, is probably how I interpret it. Yeah, the definition of encounter version appointment would help, definitely, yeah, definitely agree. Why does that look so weird? It's such a weird bubble. Johnny's getting like unique bubbles in his chats. Appointment does not turn into an encounter until they show up. Yeah, that, that's, yeah, that's how I understand as well. And it's just a date until patient shows up. I think this is sorting the data. Yeah, yeah, this all makes sense. But why? Yeah, that's a... I think there's a lot of mixed thoughts on that. I think the stereotypical common thing is that Epic and most like large electronic health records or EHRs, folks don't like it because they are truly a billing system. So there's a lot of documentation, you know, if you want to get paid by your insurance, you have to make sure, did you, what did you do? Did you see the patient? Did you perform this procedure? Did you talk to them for this amount of time? And each one of those things are associated with codes and those codes is used for billing to get paid and reimbursed. And if you don't document it, you don't get paid. So what most people usually say is these commercial EHRs are first and foremost billing systems. So you have your doctors that must have to sit there and document everything or they don't get paid. So that's one. And so the second thing is like related to that, they are more so... Billing is a first-class citizen. Taking care of patients is, this might be a controversial opinion, maybe a second-class citizen. So you don't care as much about the physicians or nurses or pharmacists experience in making sure they are like having that relationship with the patient. You were just making sure that you can bill for those services rendered. So it's kind of like unfortunate thing, but. I think a lot of the newer generation, uh, the younger ones do like this and it's also the world that many younger folks have lived in. uh, the younger ones do like this, and it's also the world that many younger folks have lived in. They haven't really worked with paper charts. Uh, I have, and paper charts are not fun. I, I like EHRs for that reason, but I do think they are very, very clunky. It's not well-designed. Um, is HL7 based on Epic? Uh, no, HL7 existed way before Epic even. HL7 version 2 is like the de facto standard used to like send information back and forth between different systems. Um, if anything, Epic, Epic uses HL7 to communicate back and forth between different systems. Uh, man, it's turning into like a AMA. EHR is mainly for billing, not for mining. Yeah, that makes sense. Uh, I think we need to design a better system. Yeah, we, we need to design a better, and this, this right here. I mean, this is why I'm spending the time to learn fires because it's easy to implement. Um, it's way easier to implement, way better than HL7 version 2. And I, my perspective right now is that the, the more people who learn FIRE, learn how to model healthcare in FIRE, the better it will be moving forward. And, and maybe that's, I don't know if that's like a. I don't, I don't know. The, the momentum, the ease, uh, the flexibility, uh, alignment with modern data standards and how you send data. Like it, it's based on web standards that are banking information, food services, uh, Lyft, Uber, all those kinds of things. They all use web standards and that's what FIRE is primarily based up, based on and uses, so. I, I have a lot of, uh, hope that FIRE will solve a lot of our interoperability problems. Um, Johnny says, sorry, no, no, not at all. Uh, I'm surprised you're like just tuning in to talk about these things too. Um, which, which, which is great. I think it makes it more, more interesting. Um, okay, so this is the encounter. Let's go on to the next one. It's appointment. Uh, okay, so appointment resource. A booking of a healthcare event among patients, practitioners, related persons, and or devices for a specific date time. This may result in one or more encounters. One or more encounters. So an appointment can lead to more than one encounter. Interesting. Scope and usage. Appointment resources are used to provide information about a planned meeting that may be in the future or past. The resource only describes a single meeting. A series of repeated visits would require multiple appointment resources to be created for each instance. Examples include a scheduled surgery, a follow-up for a clinical visit, a scheduled conference call between clinicians to discuss a case, the reservation of a piece of diagnostic equipment for a particular use, et cetera. The visit scheduled by an appointment may be in person or remote, by phone, video conference. All that matters is that the time in usage of one or more individuals' locations and or pieces of equipment is being fully or partially reserved for designated, designated period of time. This definition takes the concepts of appointments in a clinical setting and also extends them to be relevant in the community healthcare space and to ease exposure to other appointment calendar standards widely used outside of healthcare. Takes the concepts of appointments in a clinical settings, also extends them to be relevant in the community healthcare space and ease exposure to other appointment calendar standards. I didn't even know that there's standards for appointment stuff used outside of healthcare. That's interesting. This is actually a really long, oh my goodness, resource. Okay. Um. What, what I get from this though is that one, like this might be a potential quiz area. A, an appointment can lead to one or more encounters. I, I'm just gonna write that down. I feel like that's good to know. This is under appointment. Uh, okay. Let me go back. Um, follow-up visits. Yeah, follow-up visits. That's, I think that's what it was. Does the encounter start at check-in or only the moment they meet with a healthcare professional? Uh. I believe it starts at check-in. It sounds like you can have an encounter beforehand for like planning purposes, but the moment they, let's say, arrive, and I assume that's when the appointment like closes or whatever. Then they can start. In, in Epic, at least, what usually happens is the moment you arrive and you, you're sitting down with someone, they will actually physically click something that says you've arrived, and I think that's when it would start. I wonder how all the data are linked back to the patient as the unique identifier. Our encounter is also unique. Um, so a couple of things. It's like, so all of these resources, I haven't been showing it because it's not needed for the exam. Uh, you mainly, for the exam purposes, you just have to understand how do you represent a healthcare concept in FIRE? And you know, these are the resources used to represent it. You don't really need to know the individual data elements. But every one of these data elements usually has some link back to the patient, so. Yeah, so participants may be involved. Uh, actually, no, there's probably another one. The subject. Code, reason, code, reason. Supporting information, slot, patient instruction. Participant type. Oh yeah, so it's here. It's probably this. So you, you link it through. I've never used this resource, so I'm not as familiar with it. Um, you link it here. And every one of these, uh, if you read through like the FIRE standard in general, they all have unique IDs. Like they call them logical IDs, so you can always link everything back to that patient. Um, or you can use like the resource we talked about earlier, which is the episode of care resource, and you can find all encounters associated with the patient as well. Uh, okay. Let's keep going through here. The basic workflow to create an appointment. Discovery addressing. Before an appointment can be made, the address endpoint details of the resource that we want to schedule an appointment must, with must be determined. This is often based on the healthcare service type and any formatting information which indicates how to make the request. This is specifically handled via the schedule resource. Yeah, it makes sense, right? So you're, you look at different schedules. The schedules have different types of what healthcare services use. And by the way, in case anyone's just wondering, no one's probably asking, but how I usually learn is I kind of talk out loud and rationalize how these concepts relate to each other. That's, that's how I learned. So this is why these live streams work out, because I just kind of talk out loud and rationalize how they connect. Um, but yeah, so these, you have a schedule. Schedules offers different healthcare services. And then those services, or rather, the schedule is linked to different slots, and then the appointments are booked against each one of those slots. Checking availability on the schedule. Optional. This optional step permits the checking of any available, existing available times, slot resources associated with selected schedule that can be booked against. Just because the time is indicated as available doesn't guarantee that an appointment can be made. The booking system that is going to process the requests may make other qualifying decisions to determine if the appointment can be made, such as permissions, assessments, availability of other resources. This step is optional as the creation of the appointment is never a guaranteed action. But by performing this availability check, you can increase the chances of making a successful booking. Checking availability. So I, I think that there was, I'm just gonna go check real quick. I think there was like eligibility also defined on schedule or is that on my healthcare service? There's no eligibility here. I think it was probably healthcare service. Yeah, healthcare service. So that's probably one of the things you can check. So in a schedule, you can have a list of healthcare services. And one of the factors that determine whether you can book an appointment is probably the eligibility criteria within those healthcare services. So with healthcare services, let's say for only pediatric patients and you're an adult booking an appointment, you would probably want to check that they're able to get that, which in that case probably would not because they're not a pediatric patient. Uh, I think that makes sense. There's probably other reasons, because it's like just availability. And it's optional. Making the appointment request. When an appointment is required, a requester creates a new appointment resource with the appointment status proposed. Proposed. Okay, so someone requests an appointment. When that happens, the status is proposed. All included participants. Optional or mandatory should have the status needs action. Makes sense. To allow filtering, displaying appointments to user participants for accepting or rejecting new and updated requests. Based on internal system business rules, certain statuses may be automatically updated. For example, reject because the requested participant is on vacation or this type of user is not allowed to request those specific appointments. It's cool. It's like lets people know that they need to review their stuff. I love the fact that you are interested in this, Johnny. I feel like this material is so dry. That I feel like just you and Carrie just commenting here has made it much more entertaining, but this is super dry. I have, I don't, I'm not very interested in this, this type of content either, but yeah, it's super complicated. Uh, which I, I think I was talking to some friends just a couple of months ago about how annoyingly complicated it is to simply get a referral. Like they have to like call so many different doctors, call so many different clinics just to get referrals to specialists. This is part of the reason why. It's so freaking hard. Um, that there should be simplified version. Yeah, I. Uh, it's, it's unfortunate. I think, but again, going back to what I said earlier, I think this is why I'm so interested in FIRE. I think this is one of those awesome opportunities that if we all learn FIRE, implement FIRE, we can really streamline these things, which I know it's out, I mean, it is complicated, yes. But if you look at how it's implemented currently, which we're not, a lot of places are not using FIRE, it's even, it's even worse. Yeah, teamwork healthcare is too complicated. It is way too complicated. Yeah, there is definitely agree, Carrie. We, we have a long way to go, but again, I'm very bullish on FIRE and it's still a relatively new standard. And even given how new it is. Um, and now we have teeth behind it too, right? So a lot of regulations mandate FIRE. So with this kind of teeth behind it, I think we're gonna see much more progress in healthcare. We just need more people to learn and understand FIRE so we can implement it um, in a better way than we have in the past few decades. Uh, implement versus like other standards, that is. Okay. Hmm. We wrote this. Replying to the requests. The reply process is simply performed by the person or system handling the request, updating the participant statuses on the appointment as needed. If there are multiple systems involved, then these will create appointment response entries. So this is another resource with the desired statuses. So someone sends over an appointment with the status of proposed. And when they respond, you send back an appointment response resource with the status. Once all participants have their participation status created or updated and the main system marking the appointment participant record, records with the appointment response statuses, then the overall status of the appointment is updated. Oh, okay, so. Appointment goes to the healthcare people, the healthcare people sends back the however many are involved. The appointment response entries, all saying whether or not they accept, I guess. And once all of those are completed, then the original appointment status is then updated. That's interesting. Checking the overall status. The requester of the appointment checks for the overall status of the appointment. And appointment responses were applicable, applicable using FIRE pub tub, pub sub techniques. When the participant statuses indicate that a rescheduling is required, then the process may start again with other systems replying to a new set of times. A lot of like resources being exchanged. Here says, I'd love to build a better system where pharmacy data is integrated into HL7. I wonder if there is a dropdown box regarding the appointment response. Uh, yeah, I assume so. The, the people who are implementing would probably, you know, they must send back this appointment response. And the people who are implementing probably has a beautiful UIs of source that says, here is an appointment that a patient has requested with all the details associated with it. Do you accept yes or no? And the reasons why? So whatever reason they select will then probably get populated in that appointment response resource, has a status field, and it'll get sent back to the requester. But all, all implementation details. Um. The requester, oh yeah, we read this, where the participant indicate, the process starts again. Waitlisting the appointment. So you, this is optional. This optional step permits creating a waitlisted appointment. This could occur if appointment needs to be booked into a time that is not ideal for the patient due to lack of available time slots. In this workflow, there would be two appointments. The booked appointment in the time slot that is currently available and the waitlisted appointment with a requested period spanning the time that the patient would prefer if a new slots become available. If new time slots become available during the requested period, the scheduling system or staff at the scheduling organization can notify the patient that a new time slot is available. If the patient chooses, the waitlisted appointment would then be booked into that specific slot. And the previously booked appointment would be canceled. The specific business process for notifying patients of new availability is not specified and is up to the implementing system to determine. I don't. Uh, I've personally never encountered someone implementing this like waitlisted concept. Obviously, I know it exists for certain things, but I, I don't think I've really seen this implemented. Interesting to know that there, there's a way, there's a way to do this if it's needed. Um, I also feel like this system sounds like it needs a lot of manpower. Shouldn't you be able to automate a lot of this once the proper information is, um, input? Yeah, I, I think so. I. Yes, you can. I think one of the challenges with implementing a lot of these systems pre-FIRE, so a lot of systems right now are not on FIRE. They're on the typical standards you would expect, which is HL7 version 2. And a lot of those things can't be automated that well because people implement them, implement it differently. So then like two systems can't talk to each other. I think once, like what you're saying, if, if a lot of these, let's say, a lot of people have implemented FIRE, I think it will be much more seamless to automate these kind of things. But we're not there yet. I feel like it's gonna be a few more years before really you get mass adoption. Good for backup plan. Encourage patients to be connected. Yeah, makes sense. Can Gen AI be added to HL7? Yeah, you can definitely add. Um, Gen AI, I think. The, I guess the question would be where, right? Gen, Gen AI can hallucinate stuff, and I think like a big thing with standards is you want all systems to speak the same language. You don't want to introduce hallucinations into a system where someone speaks, let's say, English that is a mix of French. Then the person over here doesn't understand English. So you need all systems, in this case, to speak FIRE. So I think the question would be where do you want to add Gen AI, knowing that you have the risk of hallucinations? So I think the question would be where do you want to add Gen AI, knowing that you have the risk of hallucinations uh in there? That would be the challenge. Um. There are two typical workflows that occur with appointments. Outlook style. Community. These types of requests are typically handled by selecting a specific time from a list of available slots, then making the request for that slot. Hospital scheduling, clinical. Clinical scheduling is often far more complex in its requirements and processing. Often this involves checking multiple availabilities across multiple systems in timing with other internal systems, not just those exposed by slot resources. Consideration should be given to situations where scheduling needs to be handled in more of a queue-like process. This type of clinical appointment scheduling has not been specifically covered with this definition of appointment resource and other related resources. However, if you would like to contribute to the modification of this resource to cover these use cases, please contact the HL seven patient admin work group. I assume this is like, let's say you go to a doctor's office. You need to also check the availability of, let's say, a nurse, the doctor themselves. Uh, if you're gonna get lab draws, the lab um, folks, the technicians that are drawing your labs. And then also checking, you know, maybe they don't have the uh the the necessary labs, the meds or specific materials for the procedures. So you're probably checking all these things. I think that's the complexity that's being referred to here. Which I didn't think that it usually even checked that level of detail. Interesting. Uh, with the appointment waitlist. Yeah, you probably can. I mean, I think the best thing is like what you were saying, like a chatbot, you can have some interaction with patients via chatbot. Johnny says, just referrals and appointment setting cancel. It shouldn't be hard to communicate, especially with implementation of AI. I think like, yeah, in in the let's say instead of a website that patients go to book appointments, they can interact with someone. I think that would make sense. You would interact with someone. The the AI system can go and look like here is all the available slots. You can interact with them and say, what time would you like? And then they would go and maybe they say, you know, a Tuesday or Wednesday. That system can go look at what's available and send them the Tuesday or Wednesday spots and say, are these specific dates available? So I think something like that definitely would work pretty well. I'm I'm not sure how widely implemented Gen AI is in healthcare, but I think chatbots are definitely one of the the bigger areas that's being looked at in in that context. I see there is a lot of opportunity for human error in terms of people not showing up to work or equipment malfunction. Uh, that's, there's definitely a lot of human error in healthcare. Um, but yeah, there there definitely could be. Um, okay, so I I do have a heart stop at four thirty my time. Um, so I'm gonna wrap up a little early just to uh, get ready for the next meeting. But um, Johnny and Carrie, thank you guys for tuning in. I think this made the studying session much more interactive, less boring, uh, because I think I was falling asleep yesterday when I was doing this. Um, but I have a week until my exam. So thank you guys for tuning in, asking questions, interacting. Uh, and I'll see you guys tomorrow when I do this again. Thanks, Johnny, man. Appreciate you. Love you too.